All right, we might as well go ahead and start today. Usual rules, how much time will we be giving this? We have given this... Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, I skipped over the police headquarters. Can we put that off until these guys are finished?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we've given this a half an hour. Jay, 20 minutes?
Yeah.
Is that the time?
So as Scott had alluded to, I'm just going to briefly go and talk about lot two. So lot two during the sidewalk, we heard basically two major concerns. One was the house size, which at the time I think was a little 8,500 square feet. Because the original conceptual layouts for the subdivision were in the ballpark of 7,500 square feet. And then the other one was the volume calculation. So what we're proposing to do is that we got together afterwards, took the last week to take a look at what was going on. They're proposing a new, basically a new footprint of the house, reduce the actual RGFA. We're going to try to keep it the same footprint, so you can see that what they're doing is taking off one of the bays, of the garage, and they're basically getting rid of that, out of the actual triangle section, removing that. So the RGFA gets reduced to about 7,500 square feet, I think it's like 75/60. So it's actually coming down to about 1,200 square feet. So it's a significant reduction. We haven't gone into the full grading yet to stop reducing the actual, the volume calcs and stuff, but we're going to do our best to try to just tighten everything up as much as we can. This is the site that we had mentioned, that the original limit of work did come out in this area, it's come out around the side, so we did, we've already tightened up already, but we are going to try to bring that volume cal down as much as we can.
Okay, good, that sounds good.
So that's the old footprint?
That's the old footprint. And what I did is I overlaid, you can see the red area, that's the old footprint, that was 8,700 square feet in black, which is the new one. So basically they're losing this section, which is there's some section above the garage, they're losing a bay, and they're losing that triangle area, so we put that all together, it's about 1,200 square feet. So here's the neighborhood locus, so we actually, because of where these lots are, and because of the size of the lots, we actually only have a few butters. So we actually have six of butters, three of which are the town. We have three residential butters at a park for Sunday Woods. One is three Sunday Woods, which we just spoke about. And the other two are 86 Conker Road and two Sunday Woods, which was also part of the subdivision. Two Sunday Woods is just under 7,000 square feet for an RGFA, which was approved by 67/68. And then 86 Conker Road is just under 4,500, so it's 4,486. And that's out, there's no garage for that house, so that's one of the reasons why it's lower. And we can see that it just touched that section there. So the rest of the butters are town of Weston. We originally proposed this house to be 77/60, based on some of the discussion points that we had. We brought it down to 74/72, so we dropped it a few hundred square feet to bring it in just a little bit. This is just a quick overlay that we brought up at the sidewalk, so you can see that, as we mentioned, here are the two additional butters other than three Sunday Woods, and then this is all surrounded by town. This is the former subdivision, existing conditions with the former house, set it on a lot. And this was, which we'll discuss some, I know I'm sure we're going to refer back to this every once in a while. This is that conceptual layout that we had. So you have the approved crossing, which basically was the culvert for the veronal pool. We have the house, basically in that section there, six bedroom house. Recharge base and septic system. And then the limit of work with that, one little, you know, basically secondary limit of work area to make sure we didn't take down any of the existing vegetation or, and also now we have a bunch of proposed plantings in that area as well. What we're proposing is basically, this is the updated plan. As I had mentioned, the house is a little bit small. We started looking at what we could do for some grading and what we would be doing for the existing trees. So we started looking at basically, I know we had some major concerns about Sunday Woods, and so we looked in that area for trying to save some of the existing trees as we could. So I believe we're in the ballpark of seven or eight trees that were additionally that are remaining that we're saving. I can let Karen talk to that more when she starts getting to her plan. We also expanded the existing planting area. So originally we had already pushed out to put some plantings in this beyond the limit of work. This has been expanded through that area. And the actual trees in this area, plus the expansion and the former proposed trees through this whole entire area, have all been uptipped, basically. So they're all much larger than they were originally. So that was all based on the concerns that we were looking at, Sunday Woods, and we wanted to make sure that this was all fully mitigated all the way through that section there. The second part that we were talking about is basically the sport court area, which is where we're asking to open up that limit of work area. So what we did is reduce the size of that and relocated it. We felt that we could reduce it in a way and relocate it in a way to actually basically make it invisible. You can see that before we were taking down eight trees, now we're proposing to take down two trees. We put it on the other side of disturbance, the reason why we did that was that we're saving all these existing trees, 30-inch conifers, all that kind of stuff. And we're actually, Karen's plan, she'll go into it, she's underplanting that whole area. So from Sunday Woods, you're never going to be able to see that now, because all the existing, all the existing plantings are going to be remaining. We did look at what we could do to try to tighten up the grading a little bit. You know, basically it was, it's about as tight as we can make it, only because of the fact that we don't want to make sure that none of the recharge bases have any issues would break out or anything like that, so we don't, we can't really tighten that section up already. We had already looked at basically, originally having an idea of grading through this area, but basically we did the walkout area to reduce the volume through that section over there.
Okay, good. Thanks, Jay.
You're up.
So what is getting?
Okay, so I understand what you said. So you want to say? Yeah. Okay. So I came on the project last summer after some of this had started, and Jay and I went out on a sidewalk, and we looked at this area, and here was the original, from the original subdivision was where there was some required planting. And there was supposed to be about 20 trees planted in there, well, there were supposed to be 20 trees. We looked at that area and we said, there are some existing mature trees that we wanted to keep, and putting in 20 trees there at between eight to 10 and 12 to 14 was going to be very tight. So we wanted to talk with Kim and said, can we take some of those trees and spread them along this way? So that we can increase the screening along the whole path, because this is where the path is closest to the property line, and we wanted to expand that while keeping the intent of the screening in here. So for the original, for the sidewalk, we had planted in, used this area here and planted out on this area to expand it. And then we also have screen trees that are along, continue along this property line, so it's about 300 feet of screening along here. After the sidewalk, we were listening to Al and we were very concerned about this path, so the trees that are in here, I bumped them up sizes. The trees in this section, originally there were 11 trees in this section right here. I added another tree to that, and then added six more trees up in here between the walk and the bathroom house. So I think looking through this is going to be really good screening, plus the fact that I didn't want to have them all jammed up against the path so it looked like a wall, so it's more, it's more spread out. It still has the woodsy feel, you're in the woods, but there's screening underneath the larger trees. So I feel like we've really beefed up this area. Then we also looked at this, the grading along in here, and I know there was some concern about the tree count. So originally there were 97, no, 93 trees in the original limit of work that could have been taken down. We found seven trees along here that we're saving now, so that reduces it down. And then we found more trees up near the proposed sport court that we're going to save, because we've reduced that size. So there's like 45 evergreen trees along here, plus the seven that we've saved. And in addition, adding, I already had had some rhododendrons in here that were for the understory screening, and I added in some more large, they're deciduous shrubs, but they're shrubs that are dense during the growing season, so it's, which hazel and bog rush buckeye, they're going to get larger and provide even more understory screening here. So I think from the path to the house is really well screened. I don't, you know, I think it's very well screened. Then, as we move through the property here, you can see where we've reduced the size of the sport court. It was 40 by 60, and now it's 35, 30 by 45. And as Jay said, we saved all the trees in here that there was a concern, there was eight trees that were going to be removed, and now there's only two. And by doing this, we're in the, we're in the spot where it's the least disturbance to this area. We're not really changing the grading, we're putting a surface on it, but we're not changing the grading, it's a permeable surface. And we've also added again some understory trees, some understory shrubs in here to provide additional screening, and some other shrubs on the outside, so it's really going to feel hidden. You know, it's nestled in there, it's really hidden. And these are the trees that we saved in the box as we're by doing that. So I think from here to here, it's about, it's almost 300 feet, and I don't think you're going to really see it from the path.
Where do we stand on lighting?
So the lighting, there's, it's 18, I remember, lighting, it's 1850 lumens?
18,000?
18,350 lumens.
Okay, and where are they?
So there's, there's a couple of post lights along this road, along this driveway, especially near, one here, one here at the crossing, and one as you come into here. There's some downlights in this wall, they're the little island lights, so they're all facing down. There's sconces and a downlight at the front door, and that is all underneath a roof. And there's another sconce on this door, and that's also underneath a roof. And then there's a pool light, and there are some lights under the deck that are downlighting. There's patio under the deck, and they're all recessed hamster lights, and a couple of sconces on the outside. As Jay said, your custom.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, that's what I want to, yeah, blow this. So, okay, so you've got hanging lights?
Yeah, so that's the hanging.
Where's the hanging light?
One hanging light is over the front door.
Over the front door?
Under a porch.
Where's the bulb in the fixture? Right in the middle? It's not up in the housing?
It's not up in the housing, but the glass is a beaded glass, and it's really filigreed around it.
Is it dark spacked with light? I don't see that.
It isn't. None of them are, at least the post lights. Where's the pool fence?
The pool fence is around, just around the pool, yeah, I don't know, just, it's just around the, the way. The wrong drawing, I think.
Right.
Exactly the same.
Where are the retaining walls?
There's a retain wall right here at the front, and there's retaining wall around the pool area. So when you're, that's like the sunken area, so there's that, that retain wall.
So these are the post lights?
Yeah.
How tall are the trees along the pan? What sizes are they?
Okay, so starting at this end, there's a couple that are eight by 10 right down in here, but this grouping has, it originally had 11 trees at eight to 10, and now we have 12 trees, and there's seven that are eight to 10, and five that are 10 to 12, right in this group. This, these back in here are eight to 10s. And then as you get in here, we originally were required to have seven that were eight to 10, seven that were 10 to 12, and six that were 12 to 14. And now we have nine that are 12 to 14, and six that are 10 to 12. So I took out, in this area, took out all eight by 10, eight to 10s, eight by 10s. And then as you move along here, these are all 10 to 12s. So the only small, the smallest ones are out, later first.
Architecture, who's doing the architecture?
When we were on the sidewalk, I presented the rendered elevation. Now, this is, this was done about five months ago, since this time. This house has dropped five feet, so this ridge is now five feet lower. These ceilings are one foot lower, the upper ceilings are one foot lower. All the plate lines have been dropped, so this has gone through drastic.
Do we have a third inversion?
Yes. So what is the ridge height? So the ridge height is at 191.7, allowable is 192. What I did to accomplish that was to use a seven-foot plate on the second floor, nine-foot plate on the first floor. I took my pitches from 12 pitch to eight and a half. Basically, the whole second floor is up in, basically in the roof line. They still get eight foot ceilings, but all the bedrooms have clipped ceilings. By using sheds, I'm able to get my sash heights back to normal, and that happens. I think it's worth noting, because another discussion about the rear elevation and the height of that. So you're only three or four inches below the allowed? Yeah. Yep.
You've really did the work to get there, to get the 37 feet?
That'll work, I thought.
It's 28 feet from the foundation, so, and it's a nine foot, so what happens is the groundwater is driving this house.
So you're building up?
From the, I mean, is it not the standard 4.4 feet?
No, it's a nine foot four, nine foot.
I have a second.
What is the minimum? Check up your report there.
You really can, because we will end up at 8.5, like five or something, once you take into account the, you know, the, the.
And what happens also is that we have, from the walkout area in the back, we're two steps up from the basement for the walkout area, where the pool is. So when we need a sort of clearance of that doorway, so if we go, if we drop the actual part of foundation anymore, we're not going to need that.
So, but aren't you building up? Aren't you building up to get to the?
So what we have, so we have a nine foot four, and so what we have in the basement right now, the basement slab is 18 inches off the ground, which normally, in normal designs, we're always looking at 24 inches. We dropped that six inches, we don't want to go any closer than that. And so by doing that, we are using the existing grade outside is exactly existing grade, but we have a pool, that's all existing grade. But we did sink the basement down to try to keep the house down. And so we have two steps up, so what happens is that, at that point, we're only eight foot four to the top of the foundation at that point. So the sunken area here, a nine foot, but where you're doing the walkout, you're eight.
You get it from the basement, but it's still.
I'm not sure I do.
But it's like, the rest of it, it's like, whoa.
Yep, so what happens is the, so basically with the basement slab, you basically are two steps up to the walkout area right there, and this is all at existing grade.
But if you, if you go up it, you still get, you still get the door height, don't you?
So what we have is, so from that point, we're at eight foot four, basically, and we're getting, where this section's four, it's nine feet, and then after it's all finished.
Why don't you get the clearance of the doorway? That's what I'm still trying to.
Because we're stepping up to get outside.
I understand that, but you still, all you need is the door height.
Yeah.
You still get the door.
Oh, yeah, but we get, because now we get close to the minimum, so that's what we're talking, so when we do that, we have the seven-foot door, so then you have a foot to get to the top of the section. So if we, to me, if we played with that foundation, we made it eight and a half or eight feet, I'm like, that's, then we wouldn't be able to get up, that's basically.
I still don't understand that. If it's, if it, right now, the, from the slab to the bottom of the joists, looks like it's, what is it? Can't quite read.
It's eight, it's nine feet. Well, it's, it's 8.7 feet from the top slab.
It says 8 feet there.
Yeah, it's, from our stuff, we have the counts, it's the, so this is the, to the top of, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're saying to the joists, the top of foundation, it's 8.7.
Yeah, but to the joists, that's what, that's what you're going to do. So if you, if you were, if you dropped it, if you dropped it a foot, you still, why don't you get a seven-foot clearance for the door, the door coming out? I mean, why don't you get that? There's going to be two seven foot, seven inch steps, right? Or two six inch steps, what are they?
Two six inch steps.
If you put two six.
See, that's a foot. So you're now here at eight feet, minus, minus a foot is seven feet.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, this, yeah.
I think you can do it. You can do it with a 6'8" door, doesn't have to be a seven, seven foot door. You could still get the casing in it. Couldn't you?
As a developer to build, the biggest issue actually.
Couldn't you?
Could you squeeze it in here?
Yes.
Yeah. The issue being actually, if you've got an eight-foot ceiling in that basement, once you put your mechanicals in whatnot, you're really dropping, now you're limiting the use of that finished area, given the ductwork and whatnot that you run in the basement. So at an eight foot, eight foot four, it makes it very difficult to make it usable. It makes functional, but it's just, as you, I think the key thing to point out here.
You're going to, that whole basement area, everything's going to be usable. You want to get eight foot clear everywhere, nine foot clear everywhere.
No, we're going to be at eight six.
Well, it's a nine, it's a nine four, but it's going to be like eight six, but it's somewhere down as far as the ceiling.
He's got a nine, he has nine out of the bottom of the joists. So you're at, like, eight of 10, or eight, nine. But the question is, why do you need to have a complete plenum over the whole basement for, I'm assuming you're talking about air conditioning ducts and that sort of thing?
Exactly.
Yeah, but do you need to run that plenum everywhere in the basement?
Well, you're running, actually, it's all running through, it's running upstairs, so it is running.
But it's not running, you're not talking about 12-inch ducts everywhere. You're talking about trunk lines and feeders. You can run the feeders between the joists. Could you not?
Well, you could, but it just begins to really, you know, limit the.
How? You can still run the feeders between the joists. So the only thing you're worried about is the trunk lines for the AC. And that's, that's the biggest gobble of space. I mean, I don't see why you need to have an absolute clean plenum to run everything under the joists. It looks to me like, if you thought about it a little bit, you could probably figure out how to do it without, without needing the full nine feet everywhere. It's just, I'm just saying.
Is it, um, he, he could continue a little bit more, when he was talking about dropping, you know, some of these joists and trying, it's a small percentage of the house that is at that limit. We did a really good job at lowering, but the majority of the house below that limit.
You're a few inches below the 37-foot bridge.
In a small percentage of sections. If you look at all over, here's a roof plan, and it's pretty complicated.
Only 32% of the roof.
It is, of the whole, of the whole house, which represents this front to back ridge, and the connecting ridge side to side, everything else is four to five feet lower, which represents the ballpark of the house.
Well, if you go back to the elevation, it doesn't actually rebound. It looks like most of it is close.
I mean, this is the main front to back ridge, this is the section we just looked at, right? Here's the other ridge coming in, laying into it.
Right.
And then you're dropping.
There, but on the other side, you don't drop as much.
No, not as much on this side.
You drop maybe, it looks like 14, 16 inches.
Correct.
So it's, you know, it's not, it's like a, it's, most of the ridge is pretty close to the envelope, and.
Well, close to that. A couple of feet.
Well, he, he's talking about that, that section.
Well, that is fair, yeah, but it is what, how low it is.
That's a, almost a couple of feet.
That's a couple of feet.
I think that's, that's, that's those two guys that.
By the way, I don't think your roof plan is quite right.
Well, I've worked on it a fair amount.
For example, the ridge over there on the right-hand side, which is only a couple of feet lower.
Oh, yes, I see.
The maximum ridge, that can't be right.
Yeah, no, that's not right. Correct. But you know what, since you brought that up, what's complicating it is that this is a bastard pitch, you can't even go in at eight and a half, it's at seven, there amounts. So you're not hitting at 45 degree angles, so it becomes a bit difficult to hit that What I, what I wanted to show you, and I thought it was important, is that when you come to the back, because of the low plate lines, it helps bring the magnitude of back of the building down, so that it's not a full story in there.
It's like a three-story house.
I think skirting the deck helps as well, the upper deck.
But also, you've got to remember that this, this whole section, which he hasn't shown, is that, that's the wall section, because this, so there's a 4x4 wall, it comes along here, so this whole section here, this is all hidden on that side. And then with the, see the plantings, we have, we have a couple of garage sections, you'll see that the, this is all, you're going to get only bits and pieces at best of this house when you sell it.
Yeah, you understand our concerns, it's a wall of light, and that's the side that faces trails and people's.
Sunset, yeah, in August.
Dust, snow shooing through in winter, you're going to see a beacon of a wall of light.
We had hoped to use, just to get back to the architecture, very traditional materials, cedar, stone at the bottom, natural, and some copper roof, probably some clapboard in the back where the stone will have a level, level, copper gutters, dark roof, dark, dark architectural.
Are you bringing any film?
Yes. Yep, so you have.
So you're bringing this up, you're bringing up the whole thing?
No, not necessarily.
Like the back wall?
Not the, well, this, not this whole section, some of the other sections. Yep.
Did you know what your lowest adjacent grade is?
Yes. So what we have is, this whole section down here, this is all going in at existing grade, all down through here. This is all basically existing grade, and so I think it's about a half a foot grade difference for some of the sections.
And what elevation was?
This is 1, this is 156, this is 154, so this is the wall we put in, so this way we can cut into this section to be able to pool, because of the walkout area back here. So we have, through this section here, we're about an 18-inch fill, and so, because that's, and this is basically all based on what the original, original conceptual, the septic hasn't changed, that, that grade is the same, it's the same groundwater. Same thing with the, with the groundwater for the original conceptual layout. We actually had the same idea for that, that if you look from this original concept, concept plan, this house was 36 feet to the natural grade. It had, seems that groundwater, TWC was off a little less than a foot from what's currently designed, so it was, it was still in that ballpark. The septic system was the same with grainy elevations. As we come through this section over here, the 156 and 154, those are the same grades that actually wrap around the house on this corner over here, which is the 156 and 154. We're actually not showing it all the way around the house, because we're actually keeping this all existing grade. So what we have right now is that you have this crossing, which is all part of the actual subdivision pools, that actually stops right here. That crossing has 500 yards of fill. It's on this property, and that's where the calc set come up to 2,200, because it has included this calc in it, because it's a private driveway for this lot, so about 500 cubic yards of that is basically contained in the driveway section. For all this site work, we're at 1,700. Just to give you an idea, lot two, lot one, which was two Sunday Woods, that was just over 1,700 cubic yards, so for the work that was done in that project, so. The original conceptual, which actually didn't really take into account, you know, these were all just quick sketches that we were putting together for this stuff, this was 1,500. So I'm like, you're, you're in a 10% range of what was originally thought of when we were doing these designs. So I'm like, I understand it's a. So I'm like, I understand it, it is a high number, but it's, it's still in keeping with what, originally what this site really pushes for, because it's all, each one of these sites all had groundwater. So each one of them was gonna require a lot of fill to, 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 to work our own project site.
Yeah, the, the, one of the things that's, that you're getting a reaction to is the fact that in the original scheme, you were thinking, you had fifteen hundred cubic carats of fill around the whole house.
Yes.
Now we have seventeen hundred cubic carats around three, three quarter of the front sides, sides of the house. So that's number one. Number two, there's a, we're, I think you're hearing a reaction to the, to, to actually the fact that you aren't filling around the backside of the house, which happens to be the side with the most public impact.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And that's, and I think that's what we were trying to do was, because I'm like, that's a, that's a total valid, um, the, uh, we wanna look at, and we actually did a couple of new sections. And basically, this is, what we wanna do is basically take a look at, you know, looking back from the actual Sunday Woods path back at the project site. And so what we did is, we actually went out, took a look at the existing trees, got the lower canopies, got, they were, they were all based on our tree locations, went out, cut the lower canopies, we added Karen's proposed plans, I mean, proposed plantings, you know, put the little person on the path, and, you know, basically, full sightlines are covered. Now, we're not gonna say that there isn't gonna be a gap here or there, there's a few take, a look at. Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the backside. You take a look at, literally, not taking into account grading through this section of where the person would be, but took the plantings that Karen's showing. This was the original cross section that we did for the actual site walk. These are Karen's proposed plantings, and these are all the existing evergreens with the canopies that we shot. And you're only gonna get little blips of the houses you go through there, because these are all evergreens, so they're gonna stay there the whole time.
What kinds?
What kind of evergreen? There's, um, white pines, there's, uh, limer pines, there's white, um, spruces, and there's Norway spruces, yeah. The turbines, thank you. Yeah, so there's spruces and pines, and, and the pine is much less, it's dense, and spruces are down.
The white pines are gonna do this, and they're gonna be, they're gonna be massed up for a while. Are, are there any that grow up and, and?
The, all, the, everything else does, yeah.
Everything else does.
Yeah, the white pines are the only ones that move, yes, the little ones, and they're not a lot of them.
Yeah.
So Jay, I wanted to know, I asked before, the lowest adjacent natural grade.
Yep. Oh, around the, on the, exactly.
Around the house, the lowest adjacent natural grade.
So we have, the, uh, so that'd be like, just beyond the limit of work, so in the section here.
No, touching the house.
Oh, touching house, sorry. So we have, it's, uh, one, one fifty four is the low, is the, basically, this is, this one fifty four coming through here is the existing one fifty four contour, so that's.
Is that the natural grade, or that's the built up?
This is the natural grade, right, this is the one fifty four.
And that's the lowest.
Yep. And so we're up, and then up here, it's one fifty eight, it's, it's existing grade.
My, my reason on all this, is as you know, the work that I do, um, you know, the, the floodplain is, is projected at just under one fifty one.
Yes.
Feet, in terms of the one percent annual chance of flood. And that's thirty years old data, so we know that things have changed a lot more, there's a lot more water in our system because of runoff, sprinklers, and everything else, right? So you don't have a lot of margin there, and so your basement, I would think, would need to be well floodproofed and well protected by sub pumps.
We have, we were talking to, uh, yeah.
You know, I mean, yeah, is that something you've, your cognizance of at this point?
Yes, we talked about it, and, um.
I mean, I, you know, it's up to you whether you want to have a wet basement.
We don't wanna have a wet basement.
Somehow I figured that.
It's a pleasant thing.
I, I, I figured that was probably true, so, but you're very close to the floodplain, and this data is really old data. So I mean, it could easily be that if, if this was ever re-studied, that, you know, that, that floodplain may be two feet higher.
You know what the, you know, I mean, part of, I guess part of the problem that we're having here is, is, you know, uh, you know, I mean, with my wife Melanie, we have four kids, so obviously, this is our dream house, we bought this lot, the water table's a mission. Like, people are talking about the height, we have in some rooms, five foot, you know, sections in the bedrooms, I mean, we really did try to, you know, we listened to the, to the, in the site walk, to all of the comments, I mean, we planted over sixty trees right now, you can't really see that house, you know, very little from the walk, and you can't see any of it, you know, and, and the way we placed it and tried to, you know, we, we listened, we listened and we tried hard.
No, no, I hear you on that.
And we're dealing with a situation where like, we can't go lower, you know, we can't go in the water, so.
You can bring the floor.
We try, and so we have a massive, you know, the majority, I think it's like sixty something percentage of the house is actually lower than the allowable limit, and we do have a percentage that's, you know, that's close, but, you know, like I said, my wife's a designer, I'm in the conservation, conservation business, we try to have the integration of this.
As long as it comes in lower, you know, then you're fine. If it comes in higher, then you gotta change it, and that's expensive, so you don't wanna do that. You wanna definitely put it lower. My point about the floodplain area in the basement is, you may wanna think about putting your utilities up higher, rather than on the floor of the basement. You know, whatever you have there might be at risk, you know, if there was a greater event than a one percent annual chance of flood, which they call a honey deer flood, but it has nothing to do with honey dews. Okay. He'll tell you all about that. That's his job.
And what, I don't know what you're, quite what you're driving at.
Um, it would worry me if I was building this.
No, I, I understand it, worries, what, what, what's.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a regulatory issue at this stage.
Okay, okay.
So would you suggest maybe, just maybe, they keep the house the way it is, but like, make that basement level four?
I probably don't, I probably don't without a basement if it was made, but I'm a little more conservative.
Yeah, but would you say that you, what you're, what I'm hearing you say is that, uh, data's very old, who knows what it really is in terms of flooding, and that maybe nine feet is very, not so much in terms of lowering the whole height of the house, but just to, to bring that up, you know, just for a little bit more of a margin of safety for the wall.
We do have, I think we'd rather put the safety measures in to make sure, because there are safety measures that we could put in, because that even makes, exasperates the problems being discussed tonight, like, we really did, because of the water table, we've been through like thirty different designs of this house, and we tried to like.
It was a difficult block to buy, you knew that, you knew that when you bought it.
Yeah, we did, but we also, I think, stayed within, you know, limits and.
But see, you know, there's another thing you can do, you're gonna love this, you could get, you could hire them to do an H and A, a little mini H and A study on the cherry wood per basement. That would give you a really accurate picture of what that one percent annual chance would be. FEMA doesn't have, I work for FEMA, we don't have the light to do it. While new maps came out and they're digitized, it's all old data on the maps and this stuff. So, you could hire them to do that. I don't use them, but he's your consultant, alright, yeah.
I think we, I think we prefer to do the mitigating, you know, the, some of the mitigating measures, and.
Let me talk about that.
Now that you, now that, you know, but now that you bring the issue up, you see what we're up against, the height, we, we don't have high ceilings here, we have low ceilings by most measures for this, you know, this type of a house.
I, I, the suggestion here was that you don't, we don't, we're skeptical that you need nine feet from the slab to the, to the bottom of the joists in the basement, that is, that's not about the water table. His, his, his concern is totally different from that concern.
They, they told me that we would end up with like eight, like eight points, you know, eight feet six inches, based on the way we've designed this, that.
Well, we have a, it's eight point seven feet from the, uh, from the slab to the top of foundation.
The top of the foundation, but that's at the bottom of the joists, that's where your ceiling's gonna be. So, um, because you gotta, you, you have to drill the plates in. It's right in the section. All we're saying is.
If we lower it a foot, we're likely to be in the sevens range, and I think.
Is that a good sale?
And it's a really.
You're not likely to be in the sevens.
You have to be careful where you put the ductwork in it.
Yeah, where, because, that's where your trunks and your ductwork and the light, um, by the time you get, with strapped to ceilings and whatnot, it, you know, you, you lose every inch, and what happens in a house like this, um, you, you create a cave effect in the basement, so you wind up where a basement that, yeah, you can finish it, you can, but it doesn't give you the, the argument you're looking at.
Some flexibility for lights and moldings and things that.
They have plenty of flexibility. You, you're not guiltless. I, I, before we get in, we're getting too far into comments, I wanted to get, but, but you, you do have spaces between joists. It's not a completely solid structure, it's not like a concrete floor, so you're not, you're not losing that much flexibility, but that's just, that's just one of the issues, I think, you know, we, before we get further into comments, maybe we should get input from our consultants. Um, start with you, Dave. This is, um, this is gonna, this is an interesting challenge. I mean, they, they, they've actually got almost a flat site, where they now have two retaining walls, so, to handle the, the overburden they've got on that existing site to get the, the big basement in. And I'm assuming that they're, that, that, they've got an elaborate way of having to deal with the septic system and the, and the stormwater issue with a water table that high.
It's, septic and the stormwater essentially been designed since.
That was in the, that was in the initial one.
Yeah.
So is that, you have, none of, anything that we've talked about has changed those designs?
Uh, I mean, he's tweaked it to fit the particulars of like this, 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 this design, but the, actually, the elevation that these things are going in at, the actual design for the septic's the same.
The actual, uh, sorry, the, um, the size did get bigger only because of the, the town storm waters.
Oh, the, the size of the storm changed.
When we did the subdivision with seven inches for the, the one and a hundred storm event, now it's eight and a half, so those all got kicked up.
But, you know, where they were in the ground plane, uh, I mean, the particulars, and I still have to see it, because, I mean, they, they made some changes that you heard about tonight, and it's, but it's still the same program, it's just a little bit, you know, tighter. Uh, you know, where the drains are and things like that, but the, 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 the bones of this was done five years ago.
Yeah, but the, the question is, is there anything about this scheme that's, that had a material impact on the initial design?
No, I think, I mean, it's, it's, it's essentially the same program we saw back then, except just more flushed out, houses are a little bit bigger, uh.
Was the average natural grade the same?
Yeah, I think the houses were always going in about that, because the one house was always on, um, the James, James lot.
Yep, exactly, yeah, it's the, when we did the, we did the average natural grade for each one of these houses, when we did all that stuff, until lot three, which is this house, that's what I mentioned, it was thirty six feet from average natural grade to the ridge on that. Um, we also showed, uh, almost seven steps, actually, we did show seven steps from the driveway up to the actual first floor, which we all know when someone is really gonna buy that house and do the work, they're not gonna have seven steps in turnage, so. So I mean, so these, that, the grading we had on that slide, and that's, that, that kinda talks about what we were talking about that with the fifteen hundred for that original layout. There was some grading there that we just did, because we showed the, the little circular driveway, which we actually ended up taking off, but there is, I'm like, most people are gonna look at that and want to bring that up. I mean, that, that's seven steps in the front edge, it was kinda what was laid out at, but that house ridge was thirty six feet from natural grade.
Yeah, well, Kim, that, anything from, no?
I mean, it's an improvement on what we saw on the site.
Well, it, it, that is true, but the, the, but what about the assertion that you're not gonna see any of the house from the, from the, from the path?
Well, it's, it's impossible to say that you're not gonna see, I think you will see peaks until the plants grow in together, but I think the sizes that she's specing on, especially the areas that are already planted, I wouldn't go any further, because I wouldn't wanna be creating any disruption to the existing, um, vegetation, plant save. I'm a little bit nervous with some of the sizes that she has already, um, but I think that they will happen.
Do you think screening in the winter, including the under story?
It's primarily evergreen, what she's specifying. There's some.
Because I thought you mentioned it was.
Yeah, in one little area there, I said, there's some little basil and olive brush by, but, um, again, you're, if you're, and also from the trail, you have to remember, you open it, um, at five and a half feet up, so really, all you need is something about six feet, and you take out that, that view should. It's not like, from another house, from a second story to a second story, this is all pedestrian level on that zone there. Um, and then again, as she was saying, planting it, and then seeing it on a slight angle, all of the, you know, the trees that are planted within that buffer, when you kinda take the aggregate of that, you'll, you'll get kind of a solid screen. I, I think it's gonna do what we wanted to do.
Okay. Um, good, thank you. Now, you realize that an absolutely none of the lights are a dark sky?
Yeah, and we always request a dark sky compliant lighting, you know, that's our, that is the standard. I think you probably, you know that, Jim.
I'm sorry, I don't know what it means. I, we requested to do, was gonna conform to what you want.
Oh, okay.
And I, I didn't know that.
Can I, can I, when you're not, I worked with Melanie, and we were looking for lighting fixtures that she would like, she's gonna live in this house. And we went through countless different manufacturers to find dark sky lighting, and fixtures that I've used on former houses have been discontinued. And I have called manufacturers and said, we need to start making dark satellites, and they are just like, well, they don't want to, or they have, don't have them. It's really, really hard to find any, any dark satellites.
I don't know why you're having a problem, because this is a standard, as David said, this is something that we have on every house, we don't have any problem with.
And now, and I've done it before, and I have had these fixtures that I've used, and they're discontinued. So I don't, I mean, we can go back and try and find more fixtures.
Because we're not gonna allow it, it's not dark sky, honest to goodness. That's absolutely, it's been a, a standard for the last ten years.
I know, and we looked.
Well, look again. Absolutely. It, it's, it's not impossible to find them, we do it every single week. People come in, they submit lighting fixtures for us, and they're, and they're always dark sky, so we know they're available, we just have to find one.
This is the first time we've heard there's a problem.
Absolutely, the first time.
I, I don't know if they're just using the same fixtures that they've been using and not checking to see if they're available, because I've used one that looks really similar to this one with, with keys, and we use it on every house, and they're not available. So, I, I, I don't know much to tell you.
Tell me you're.
I went in, and I, I, I can't tell you how many.
This is, it's not that, it's not that people are getting away from this, or moving forward to.
We are, we find the lights.
Well, these manufacturers, Kishler, um, I can't, I can't, and I called them, and I'm like, we don't see it, because they're not listed, and when I was putting, and they'd say, out of stop, discontinued, blah, 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 I didn't wanna just throw up a fixture that we couldn't use, so we tried to get one that is blocked as possible, with low lumens on the bulbs, so that they're low lumens and they're.
And it's filtered glass, and it has the dark scroll in on the outside.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're.
But the lights are the least, I mean, we will figure that.
If it exists in this world, we'll find it.
In this world.
Yeah.
Good. See them every week, literally, it's not.
And to me, the, the, the lights on the house itself, okay, we'd like, we want, the gars, that's, one slot, even really critical, are the ones going over that bridge, because that's over the little, you know, culvert that they've got going in there, and they will be out away from the rest of the light, and they will be beacons, so.
You're talking about the goal lights?
Yes, and so those, um, I know you can get really, maybe not exactly that design style, but you can get excellent, you know, all shielded gars.
Plus that, without the drive-in, you have the full slice, you want it down anyway.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, you don't wanna be illuminated in the woods out there, and nobody wants to see the lights.
You don't wanna see the burn.
Exactly.
You want the light to shine down where you want, you don't need the light up there, and that's, that's the issue.
Yep. We're, you know, we're fine with it, we did a lot of work to try to find a pool light that was, you know, had the lowest and not a lumen, so.
Well, what is the, what is the, um, um, grading on the pool light fixture?
I think it's a thousand.
A thousand? Thousand lumens?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I wanna say that I think, I was very nervous about coming in there, because I have a pain allergy, I know, I don't like where that support cord is, I hate the fact that all the structures are going down, so I don't know, I thank probably everybody who, who thinks that Karen for, um, going out of her way to say, goes, I love what you do for support cord, you know, I'm, I'm usually not a pain of support cord at all, but this has reduced in size, and it's really kind of nice. I thank probably everybody who continued to care and for going out of your way to say, I love what you do for support cord, you know, I'm, I'm usually not as bad a support cord at all, but this is reduced in size, and it's really kind of nicely planted around, I should think it would be good in the landscape, and in fact, we're taking that to increase for that.
Three hundred feet will cut down the, the noise that would come onto the, the pathway.
It's like a football field away, you know, one other thing we haven't mentioned is, I think the only lot affected on the street is the one home that's built, and they did seven, I mean, they were like.
Right, we're not so much concerned about the abutters, like whoever's gonna be on two, or one, or any, we're concerned about the, um, conservation land and the trails, and the people who walk through there, who, um, this is a huge impact back there. I mean, we understand it's gonna be developed, but we'd like to really try hard to minimize the impact, so that they can sort of pretend as they're skiing by, that they don't see the lights out there, and I.
Like, I, you know, we sat in rooms and talked for hours, I mean, I literally said, well, if you stand next to a tree this high, what will you see? And we added like forty-something trees, and took, it's almost four hundred feet of screaming along that trail, and I don't, you know, I think when you, when you look at the trail, you know, this is kind of the area that was most important, that was described to me from Jay, you know, early on. You know, now we've, you know, we've come out in this area, we, you know, we've totally mitigated even on this corner, and you're, you're, basically, the trail goes away from the lot, here, you know, and here, it's this section right here, and I think we beefed that to a point where I, I don't think.
That's good.
We didn't stay at anything, we did everything we could possibly do.
That's good, everybody is, is appreciative of that, but we, we do, there are still some concerns that we didn't really get to address at the sidewalk, like, for example, the lighting fixtures, we didn't actually talk about those at the sidewalk. One, one suggestion I would make is, you know, you're out in the middle of the woods. You're coming down a road with no lighting fixtures on it at all. And now, in the middle of the woods, there are three pole lights. Is that the best lighting solution in that location? Or, if you want to illuminate the driveway in, in that, on that lot, is there a more sensitive way to light it? Let's say, say lower, lower lights. Um, that, that, that aren't up in the middle of, the, you know, sort of, not fixtures that you expect to see, not that I don't like Welsley, not on a driveway in Welsley. You know, this is, this is the middle of a conservation land.
Actually, the ball of light type things might work well on, uh, the, uh, going over the culvert. Yeah, go over the culvert.
Yeah, you want to light the road, but you don't want to have it be beacons.
People don't go off the road, you know, I mean, yeah, but you don't necessarily need it down.
Get in the middle of, of the woods.
There are, there are more subtle ways.
We agree, to be honest, I wasn't ready to address it, I actually thought, I said, what's the maximum lumens, and they said twenty-one thousand or something, we were at eighteen, and we talked a little bit about, I didn't know there wasn't an issue. But I think it's an issue with.
Just couldn't find the dark sky component.
I still don't even, I still, I still don't even know what, what dark sky means, to be honest.
It means that you can't see the bulb directly. Uh, if you're, you know, in, in other words, a lot, there are a lot of fixture manufacturers that make the, the bulb, put the bulbs up in the housings, so that you have the, the.
It's more illuminating than.
But it, it's, the bulb is illuminating down, you can't see it if you, if you walk.
That was describing, everything had to be shining down, so that you couldn't see anything.
It really means that the light is not going up into the sky. Means your kids might actually be able to go outside at night and see stars, as opposed to having this big, you know, light pollution, which is a big problem right here.
Right.
We're, we're the little last outpost, I think, and all of them are.
We're down to the light fixtures and, and, and the basement. You know, our question is, I mean, we would like to try to reduce that overall height as much as possible. If the basement height is through floor to underside of joists, one consequence of that, I would suggest, might be that you could significantly reduce or eliminate the retaining walls.
I don't think we can remove, we can remove them, you know, it'll reduce the total volume.
You're going from this to that.
What, what happens is the, um, that section, no, but it will, it will, that would significantly reduce the volume.
Dramatically reduce that, and I think that would be helpful, actually, especially on the front side.
Yeah, so what happens is, 'cause you will come in here, you know, as we mentioned on the sidewalk, this is about a four-foot fill. And so what happens is, the front, the front yard is, you know, it's gonna be, you know, at seven ounces, and we get it down to six. But we don't have any room from the house really to this, to this driveway area, so I think, I think, I sort of think you would still need some kind of.
Dramatically reduce by cost.
The wood, we just, I don't know. So. Yeah, we, we do, they're talking about maybe doing, if we drop it six inches, just get my little, 'cause I like that stuff, like, we go from nine to eight and a half, four.
And I, you know, there is a pretty good percentage of the house, I know you're saying it's not much lower, but it's a couple of feet lower, you know, sixty-something, sixty-eight percent of the house is, it's only those ridge lines.
So that, that puts that thirty-six, two, to the natural grade for the max range, the original concept was thirty-six, so like, that's, that's in that ballpark, and it's, it's where, you know, like, and then you mentioned, just under a third of the league range.
What do you think?
I prefer to drop the house six inches and do the mitigating measures, you know.
I'm, I'm, you guys are the architects, you guys know if it's possible.
Two of us sitting here are architects, so.
So, I kind of listen to what you say.
Basement floor.
We'll keep.
Six inches, let your house drop six inches.
Yeah, we keep the.
If you top the foundation, be six inches.
The whole house straight.
Flat base, that's it.
Everything down six inches. Which will affect, it'll affect the volume, it'll affect all that stuff, because the driveway gets less grade, all that stuff.
It's a lot better than.
I still have.
No, I'm asking you.
Well, do you have a plan of the basement?
So, which is, where's the finished part of the, the back part? So you're gonna go inside, stairs, a garage, entertainment, a bar that can work inside, outside, so.
Where's the mechanical one?
All in here.
So that, so your truck line's gonna go on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why, why you couldn't have your, your ductwork along, well, I don't know what that is. It's all, along here, and then the registers coming out here, and so you don't even need to have very much ductwork in any in this space itself, it can all be around the perimeter.
Well, Steve, whatever there is could go between the joists.
Yes, and that, that too.
Because the joists are spanning that.
If you need it, right.
It's a long way.
So, I mean, to me, it seems like it's the perfect layout, where you don't have to have your ductwork right above the space, it could be adjacent to the space. Um, and therefore, you could still have your eight-foot ceiling. Um, without having any stoppage taken out of that.
Yep, it works like a charm.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfect. I don't know, like, I'll set out if you might, see why you need a foot plumb over the entire finished basement, the entire basement.
I'm just sorry, I'm confused, because I'm hearing Jay say that we'd be at seven feet, ten inches, which you feel like you're in a dungeon, you know, and, so I don't understand.
Okay, drop it ten inches.
What's that?
Drop it ten inches, then you're at eight feet clear.
So now, I, I, we're bickering with inches now.
Exactly, so drop it a foot, and then you're at seven feet clear.
But if we, if we went to eight and a half feet, that drops it, that.
Eight and a half feet won't matter, but a foot would matter.
It gives you highest ridge now, ten inches, how much, ten inches below thirty-two inches, thirty-four percent, it's now ten inches below the, the max.
We're trying to reduce some of the fill to.
Which, which we'll do, if we drop eight inches, we're probably gonna lose two hundred yards of fill. Uh, eight inches, we, we're gonna probably lose more than that if we drop like a whole foot. I mean, I, I get, I'm just trying, I'm just, I'm trying to avoid the cave effect in that basement. That's all, and I appreciate it, you can.
We'll just continue the hearing. If, maybe what you could do is, next, we'll continue the hearing, and then we'll take a look at the mechanical layout in the basement.
Yeah.
Why you need to have the ductwork, I mean, you know, across the, the octagon space in the basement. And then we.
Well, there're gonna be several runs that go outside, they're gonna have registers on the outside wall, so I gotta, I gotta bring ductwork, you know, to that outside wall. And that's gonna run, even though the main trunk is there.
We'll look at the mechanical layout.
I still got ductwork going out there.
Yeah, we'll look at the mechanical layout, so we'll continue.
Okay.
Now, if we take the ten inches, is that your issue?
Yeah. Let's keep, that's, that's the issue.
But if we, if we lower the basement ten inches.
Lower the, well, yeah, lower the four inches, you don't have to lower the entire house.
Yeah.
So that's. So we're not changing the, the elevation in the basement, you're lowering the entire house ten inches.
So you would take, you would take your foundation down a little bit.
You're gonna lower top of foundation ten inches. Which will lower the whole house, ten inches from the back down. So the house will now be approximately fourteen.
It's gonna be lower than what's originally proposed.
Right now, it's at nine feet. At eight feet. I don't know what your floor ceiling is and the rest of the house.
You would say seven, ten, if they dropped a foot. That's the way, 'cause the, 'cause the basement slab stays the same, so you have great difference if you say that. The upper, upper section all drops, ten inches grade all the way around, your garage lot gets down, so that slope gets used to the garage lot.
Those are all improvements.
Making smaller walls, less house.
Well, I mean, you guys got a full plate, I'm just trying to resolve it, we'll have to continue.
You're gonna have to come back anyway.
You have to come back anyway.
Doesn't matter.
You have to.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, um, if, if we're just reviewing the decision plus the lighting fixture, the lighting fixture change.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can ensure that the lighting fixtures are dark sky.
The lighting fixtures will be dark sky.
But there's still not gonna be a.
There's only two, I mean, we need to talk.
Okay.
May not, just reviewing the decision. I suggest, why don't they work on lowering it by ten inches, because I think that they're, they're, it sounds like safety is upon top, parallel, like, there's some dark, dark extras, and continue this till maybe six.
Okay.
So we need to revise our decisions.
So, can, and next issue, is it possible if we lower it ten inches and also ensure the dark sky lights, that we'll be ready for a, a, a decision or a vote of that next meeting?
I'm gonna be drawing on the, around the fifteenth.
Of today.
Yeah.
So if we go into the first week of May, we wouldn't have a decision until later in May.
We wouldn't have it till the fifteenth anyway.
If we agree right now to do this ten inches.
Still, because Susan's not gonna be available until after.
We need a planner.
Yeah, we need to have a planner, so it's gonna.
To write the decision.
Yeah, to write the decision, so we're not, you're not losing any time, is the point.
And those are two main areas of concern, the ten inches and the, and to a juggle light.
We're down to those two, those two issues. It's not a big deal.
All right. Yeah, we're gonna do that. All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Jerry.